Two thousand and one at six thirty one P M. Everyone stand or sit for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So as we move through our agenda here, has everyone had the opportunity to take a look at the April twentieth meeting minutes? Let's let me update our roll call. Commissioner Huggins and Johnson are currently not in attendance.
Huggins is here.
Okay, right on, okay. The only one not attendances Commissioner Johnson and he is planning on being here later on. So our roll call is updated that everyone is here outside of Mr. Johnson. So back to our meeting minutes, has everyone had the opportunity to take a look? Any comments? So if there is no comments, I'll take a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the April meeting minutes. Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Fournette. So the motion passes and we will now move on to our general public comments. So Catherine, did you receive anything that needs to be read into the meeting minutes?
I did not.
Okay. So I will open up the the public hearing section, even though there's nothing on the agenda at six thirty three P M. If there's anybody in attendance that would like to make a comment, we'd like to hear from you now. So I'm going to assume no one is here outside of us. So we will close the public hearing portion at six thirty three P M. And on to our unfinished business, which is the updates to the CEDRWilly Design Review Standards and Guidelines Manual to address buildings in the central business district. So John, you have the floor.
All right. Well, I guess this is just, just the planning commission and staff, we can be kind of formal, informal about this today. Which is kind of the idea behind what we're doing. What we're hoping to do is just talk about our existing design standards and guidelines. Hopefully you've all looked through it enough where you understand how it works. If you have any questions about how it works, how it's applied, anything like that, we'll be happy to ask, answer any of those kind of questions from you today. We're also hoping to take on three small portions of the CBD design stuff and go over them in detail and see where we're at. Granted, this is going to be a little bit free form, so I, I hope you're okay with this format of just being free form and talking from the hip. I recognize that it's a little difficult for the planning commission to not have something to look at and make comments about. What we're trying to do is get your feedback on our existing and, and filter through you how we can update and make it better. From my understanding, this, this code was updated and it was created in two thousand and four. There was a lot of, it was very busy time at, at the city when we were trying to update our comprehensive plan on top of just a busy time with the plans and building and actual project review. So this, it's just a good time to update this and this is the way we're, we're attempting to do it is take on these three topics today. And I'm going to let Catherine go over those three topics and give a little brief overview, but really we want the planning commission to give us information that we can then put into notes and create new design standards. Depending on what we hear from the planning commission, we could end up just doing minor modifications to our existing design standards, or we might end up being, throwing these out and starting over. It's really up to the planning commission on what level of review you think needs to be done. As I've said in the past, ours is pretty good, but it definitely needs work. So interested to hear from the planning commission. Now that you've had a chance to look at not just ours, we provided three sections from three other jurisdictions. Design standards specifically addressing the, their historic downtowns. We didn't want to just hand over, you know, three different design standard manuals that are each a hundred pages each because that, that's just too much work for the planning commission to try to digest in a short amount of time. But we did provide the links in case you wanted to look at them and, and find more context from those, from those design standards. And just maybe just over to look, look them over and see how they look overall. And, you know, maybe we borrow heavily from somebody else's, which is what we did with our current one. So your feedback on our, on not just the, these three items that we're going to talk about today, but your feedback on this process as well, if this is not working for you, we're happy to come up with another, another way. This was just the best way we could think of getting a start on this. And we recognize we're going to be chipping away at a mountain here, so we're trying to do it in pieces. And we'll see how we go after we discuss these three, maybe it only takes 10 minutes, I don't know. We'll see, we'll see how it goes. And we're just here to, to help the planning commission. So with that, I'll let Catherine take over and kind of discuss the, the, the three topics that we presented to you.
All right, so yeah, we're talking about eyes and marquees, windows and doors and windows and outdoor seating and open space. So basically just the, the frontage of a building and that ground level stuff and details that make it appealing to the passerby. So I went through some other cities' design standards and looked for things that kind of get more specific because our design standards have a really great vision statement for what the vision of the CBD is, but it doesn't really go too far into some of these examples I chose have sort of specific requirements and specific language like shall. And this, you know, pictures, I believe it was snow homish that has comparison pictures of like inconsistent with the vision, consistent with the vision. And then very specific information about awnings. And then the city of Arlington, this is kind of, well, it's not specific to awnings and other things, but I thought it must be interesting is that they have a specific section for exterior rehabilitation to new additions. So they kind of talk about getting to the historic bits of the building before you're allowed to completely revent, renovate. So yeah, I think I don't want to go too far into, you know, what I think we should do for windows and doors and awnings and marquees and outdoor seating areas. But if there's anything that you guys thought was particularly interesting or well done in these other ones, and go ahead and let us know.
I can start, oh, go ahead.
Now you go first, that's me.
I took a little walking tour at five o'clock this afternoon downtown and I wanted to look at all three of these items that are on the agenda. And we can take them one at a time, but as I was looking through the Arlington specs here, I noticed that their awning rules were six feet or greater and within a foot of the curb. And I really like that compared to what we have downtown, where quite, quite a few places don't have any awnings at all. And some are only about three feet wide. They're hard to get out of the rain when you're walking down the sidewalk. And they're not continuous. So when it's raining, you go from building to building, you get wet between buildings. So it'd be nice to upgrade our awning section to make them continuous and almost all the way out to the curb. But that being said, how do you make changes like that? One of my questions I had was, what's theirs there? It'd be nice if it was all different, but how do you mandate changes or pay for it? But I guess if we're just here to change the rules, that's what we're doing, but I guess eventually they'll get caught up.
I think I can speak to that question. So when new buildings are built, we can require, we can require awnings or, or marquees is the, the term that those rigid ones are generally marquees, awnings are referred to as like the, the tapered angle type one that are often made of cloth. So when new buildings are built, we have the ability to require a certain amount of marquee or awning. When people do major modifications to their buildings, we can require new marquees or awnings. That, that could, can be a little bit difficult, you know, just because structurally some of the buildings may or may not even be able to, to withstand a, a big marquee being put on the front. But for new buildings, this would definitely apply. I believe I saw in one of these standards, they're saying if you modify your building over a certain percentage of the value, that's when it triggers like certain requirements. So that's another mechanism of, of doing, making certain things be done. That would apply to not just the marquees and awnings, but maybe, you know, if you're doing a certain amount of work to the building, you have to expose the, you say there's a false front over the existing facade. You'd have to expose that and, and bring it back up to what historical looks, or if that's not possible, you you allow them to refurbish it somehow. But that's one mechanism to address what you're talking about. How do we make that, you know, we're not going to go down the street and knock on doors and say, you know, we have these new design standards, so you have to bring your building up to these codes. It's really just when people do major modifications. And we can, we can write that into it, and that's a good point. Well, we can put a note in there to, to trigger these sorts of changes.
Anybody else?
I, I do, but I'm not quite ready with the, my note.
Hey, you know, one, one thing that I, I liked about the snow homish inclusion that you put in here, they break it down to site elements, and that's what we started the discussion with where signs, murals, fences, walls, railings, awnings, canopies, landscaping and street trees, and development within the right way. I believe all these elements here are something that are addressed in our code. But I liked the particular point of adding fences, walls and railings. And since that was part of the discussion on what actually precipitated a lot of this, the people were not happy with what was done at the one, at the bullpen. So and then what I also liked about it, they gave examples of pictures of things that were consistent and inconsistent with what the code was intended to do. So just on a format basis, I think Snow Home has done a pretty good job that we could take a look at it and actually I like that consistent inconsistent, we call it disclosure of what we're looking for. They also did a really good job of bringing out the different characteristics of a building, like what's a corner, is a power pit and things like that. Things that I know a lot of people here already know, but I like the way they put it together. Yeah, it is nice. Any visuals like that are really helpful, even just the drawings that Arlington has or some.
I, I agree with that, seeing more visuals. Our, ours has a few examples, but it was, it was helpful. Because one thing I noticed about our design standards is it's more, I don't know if I'd say anecdotal, but it's kind of almost like a history, like this is how these typically were designed. This is kind of the appearance we're going for, but not as specific as Arlington and Snow Homish were, I guess. And, and so if we're, I don't know how specific we are looking to get, how much interest there is in that. Our downtown is pretty varied, that the idea of having awnings on all the buildings is impractical because they don't already have that, while it'd be great from a staying out of the rain point of view. It's, you know, we, we can't make people do something like that to an already existing building, but I don't know, it, it definitely was appealing. One thing I noticed about Arlington's is it kind of reminded me of what we did with the U V M U, where you had to pick elements from each category to incorporate into your building. I don't know if that's something that would be of interest for this particular thing, but it did remind me of that. I, I believe it was Arlington's that, that did that.
I, I guess I can go next if nobody else is ready. So you can hear me, okay? Okay, good. So I was involved in the, in the original one when we were doing it and John hit it just about right. We were doing so many things at once that, that we, we didn't alter what was there very much. It was already a guideline and we didn't ma- make a lot of changes to it, but, but we made some. Anyway, so I, I agree that it's time to update it and some of the things I would like to see is personally, I'm so attached to the new Northwest Coast style now that I have a really hard time with the whole historic, just because it doesn't protect. It, let's see, what's the words I use here? It doesn't protect and it isn't as resilient as the new Northwest style, you know, so the fact that I like the idea in the new, new Northwest style of allowing light in. So for example, under our code, it would probably not, the original buildings had transom lights, so they have the windows and then they had brick and then they had a row of lights that were transom lights. And they didn't really have awnings, or if they did, they were the kind that pulled up and dropped down so that you could let light into the, into further into the buildings. And we've already kind of done, gone away from those, that's original style by, by making permanent awnings that cover the, the transom lights. So I like the idea in the new Northwest style where you could actually use glass awnings, for example, and that would allow light to, to go through the awning, through the transoms and into the deeper into the buildings. So that's one idea. And another thing that I really like is like the, you know, because of, at the same time, you're letting more light in, you can also, you can also go wider with your awning. And of course, again, like you said, you can't make buildings that are already, you can't make the owners retrofit the buildings that way. You have to wait until they make it up, major upgrade, and then you could, you know, allow them to do these kinds of things. I like the fact like that, in the new Northwest style, there's angled posts which hold up things. And the angled posts are both interesting and they, they're, they make the building more resilient because, you know, you don't have your post rotting off all the time because they're way well back underneath the thing. So anyway, those are a couple of reasons why I like the new Northwest style and how it would improve our downtown. The other thing that I, that comes to mind to me, just, it's been in my mind for a long time. And so I wrote that down, this down, because I haven't had time to actually go through the, the document page by page and probably won't till sometime this summer. But anyway, one of the things that came up, and this is related to what you guys brought up last time, is that I'd like to see the roll up windows with the roll up doors for windows at both sliding and folding windows, because those could be coming to the ones that accordion or the ones that slide to the side. And I'd like to see them have to match the existing modulate, vertical modulation of the, of the facade. You know, the, structurally, they kind of have to follow the horizontal modulation, but, but it'd be nice if they mimicked the vertical modulation of the, of the facade and also there, you know, be sympathetic to the buildings next door, just like everything in the, in the design guidelines is, says you have to, you know, try and make your changes to your facade, match your, not match, but sympathize with the existing modulation of your building and the buildings next to it. So anyway, those are the, the two main things that have been on my mind for, for quite some time and would like to see incorporated into our next version of the design guidelines and standards and guidelines. Thanks for listening to me.
Pat, if I could follow up with one of the things you said, so you're talking about match the existing vertical modulation. Could you explain a little bit more, you know, in the architectural terms, what that means?
Yeah, so I don't, I've never been good about architectural terms, that one I do know. What I mean is if the window you took out had a windowsill at forty two inches, then when you put a, if you, when you put a roll down door or a sliding or a folding door in, you have to have solid or wainscoting or whatever on your roll up or sliding or folding door at forty two inches, you'd have to have, say, paneling up that far. And then the glass can start wherever, wherever the glass was in the existing windows that were there and then end wherever it did up at the top. So you're following the modulation that was in the historic building. So when the thing is closed, you know, at least as a glance as you're going down the street, it matches the modulation that was there before. And when you, when you slide it open, of course, it doesn't matter because you're, you're full height then. But I think that would help people a lot with the, you know, the one that we use as an example, it was just white garage doors. And, and so the modulation wasn't there at all. And the color was, you know, way off from anything that would have been traditionally in the building. But imagine if that had been the doors that folded to the side and they were, the modulation was the same so that the glass started at the same place it started before they tore the wall out. It probably would hardly have been noticeable to somebody driving by. They just said, oh, somebody spruced up the, the wall there between the columns. So anyway, that's the, the, the main thing there. Was there something else you wanted to clarify?
No, I think that's a good explanation.
Okay.
It's also something tough to do. When you really think about what was there before they put the garage style doors in, they replaced that whole exterior wall. So they, they pulled out all those components and they just replaced it with the roll up door. And I agree with you, I mean, if I think if it was a, a different style of door and it actually had a color combination, not that white that appears like it's a garage door. You know, I think, I think maybe the response would have been differently because outdoor seating is nice. But it's just the way they went about it that I think started the not, not necessarily an uproar, but people didn't appreciate what effort they made to do what they wanted to do.
So some of these design standards kind of go into those types of specifics with requiring for doors and windows, the material and kind of banning certain materials and looks. So if we're interested in taking that route, you know, that's something to discuss. I don't like to say banning, but you know, like being a little bit more specific and using stronger language like shall for material types and things like that.
You know, we had that discussion talking about the quality of the door, if it was going to be used for a commercial building. And there's just so many different varieties of, of not only doors, but windows and you name it. So coming up with a, a standard that's kind of like our opinion of what we think looks good at this particular point in time. Where, you know, somebody making that type of an investment and if they're looking for, you know, to go out for maybe twenty or, or more years.
Sorry, I'm just looking for this section that I thought. And that, that's another reason I did like the consistent and inconsistent, because it does like the, the comparison photos that Snow Homish had, because it kind of gives an idea of the intent rather than, you know, and allowing first that flexibility and a little bit more creativity, but also being clear on like what they're not talking about, like with the awnings and doors and things. And then they have doors specifically, so they say inconsistent is aluminum frame doors with minimal space below glazing. So that's very clear, like this is not the way. And kind of covers the glazing there.
Oh, what if they're black aluminum doors like are very popular now? I think the, the doors that they put into the Liberty Vistro and, and the flower shop next door is an aluminum frame door with glass in it, and that seems very appropriate. We don't have photos, I'm sorry.
I would jump in on that too. I think that like very standard commercial, like nice commercial doors are typically aluminum. And like, it's almost foolish to put a wood door in a commercial space, in my opinion. That's just asking for trouble. But I think we can regulate the color of the, you know, I mean, or maybe that's part of the discussion is like, you can't have silver aluminum doors. And, and they made us a point there where it was talking about glazing all the way to the bottom. So it should be, you know, maybe have kick plates or, you know, whatever. There, there's just so much that we can go into here, but they show other businesses in the consistent categories in that same section that have aluminum doors, they're just not aluminum colored, you know, they're antique bronze or whatever. And they probably presumably have kick plates. And so it seemed to me that was more the issue there.
Yeah, and they kind of say things in there is to say, this is encouraged, kick plates are encouraged and wood is preferred. And then their strongest language is hardware shall be traditional and historic in character to the extent allowed under the applicable building code. So that's kind of the only, like the bottom line is that it needs to look traditional and historic in character, which is a little subjective, I guess, but it kind of allows for more. It could allow for aluminum if it looked a little nicer, right?
There's probably half of the businesses downs, downtown that have anodized aluminum doors and windows and they really take away from the classical look. And if you go further south by toward the, I'm looking at photos right now, towards the high school, where's that Stiles? What's that? That building where Stiles, that, they've got all wood doors, wood windows. It's, you know, brick front, very classy looking. And then you go to some of these other buildings and their aluminum framed windows, anodized silver aluminum windows are just disgusting. Really degrades the neighborhood when you see that. I think.
And you, you can tell who really took it seriously, you know, Stiles and Stiles, they, they built their building from scratch and they did everything they could to get it right. Oaks and Mullen, they also tried to do it as best as they could within the, the rules. And the other one I, I really just love is the one that was, I think it's Leonard Bujo Scooty, Scoogee. One that was, I think it's Leonard Bujo Scooty Scoogee, that's now a it's a, I'm not sure what shop it is, but it's. Right next to the old Oliver and Hammer Building and and I think it's just gorgeous the way they. They brought it back all the original brick inside, they put in the dark. Bronze looking window millions and the and the doors, everything about it's classy. I don't think it has an awning, but. Or at least it has a small, does it have an?
So, yeah, though it's R and E engineering and. Now it's. And then it became Bodors and now it's Harris Salon, then I apologize, I don't recall the name. And the other they did a really nice job with that remodel. So we'll definitely be amping this up with more. Photos and diagrams and things that describe. You know, the. The elements of a building that's I think really helpful for people. I think there's some of that in there, but maybe not in these sections. I I seem I recall it in there, but yet I don't. I don't see it in this copy. So. Yeah, we'll we'll add some of that. Mr. Huggins was talking about. Vertical modulation and horizontal modulation, maybe we can have a little bit of discussion and about those in here. Just so people know when they're reading through and we talk about vertical modulation. It's on it's it would be nice of us if we explained it in in this design standards. What that what that means. So as people are trying to design their building without getting an architect, who knows what that means to do so. I also liked what Catherine was talking about with Arlington. Having a requirement that if you're doing any modifications to the building, you have to do like an exploratory. Pull off. The the sections in that area that you want to work and see what's underneath and if it's. If it's historic and in good shape, you you would restore it and or mimic it. And we can, you know, look closer at Arlington. Do you? Do you have Arlington section on that, Catherine, that you can just read it to everybody so they know what we're speaking of?
Yeah, so it's page twenty three of the packet. And it says, it's just kind of says overview and goals. These standards apply to existing commercial and mixed. So I just was checking that I was not muted in a possible place. Mixes buildings within the downtown central business district. In this context, rehabilitation involves repair or alteration to either maintain the building. Or provide for a change in use repairs and alterations to buildings shall protect and maintain historic features and materials. Historic preservation and restoration of existing architectural features. Historic exterior. Features include but are not limited to building details, roof lines and parapets, window size. Types of framing, sash, glazing and. Their materials, patterns of divided lights. Door sizes and styles and framing of door types and materials storefront materials and storefront details sidewalk canopy materials types, materials, trim. Details historic building signage. Such as dates or names along with cornerstones and plaques. And in general, the overall building trim and articulation. Historic architectural features of existing buildings shall be retained and repaired rather than removed. If these features are severely damaged, they shall be replaced with features identical in appearance to the original features. Replacement of preexisting architectural features where historic features have been removed or destroyed in the past, those original features shall be restored. Where new construction or rehabilitation makes this feasible. And then additions to existing buildings, new additions to historic buildings shall respect the architecture of the existing building, materials, massing colors and detailing of the existing buildings shall guide the design of the new additions. New additions shall also be compatible with the historic art. Historic architectural features of adjacent historic buildings, including. Compatibility with historic building materials, colors, signage, storefront organization, sidewalk canopies and facade organization. And then canopies and weather protection over sidewalks, historic sidewalk canopies shall be maintained, restored or rehabilitated according to the provisions of this chapter. Relationship of renovations and additions to adjacent buildings. New additions to buildings. New additions to existing buildings and new infill construction shall be compatible with architectural features of adjacent historic buildings, including compatibility with historic building materials. Color signage storefront organization sidewalk canopies and facade organization. So. Pretty clear about maintaining that historic look and if you're gonna. Touch a building or alter a building, the first goal and the first priority is the historic features and matching those around it. But this is specific to the historic area. We could. I mean, if we kind of want to take that route, we could. Start talking about what buildings are considered the important historic ones that would want to be preserved or matched. That's a thought.
Does Arlington have any official historic designation in the area to which this applies? Well, we'll look into that if you don't know the answer offhand. Because if they don't, you know, then we can just. Adopt something similarly. I think it would make sense if, you know, the the historic part of our downtown is. Metcalf Street and. The post office. And maybe some of the. Maybe a couple of buildings along State Street.
No, Arlington does it where they define a section called their Old Town Business District. And the complaint that I've heard for years, not just even when I became involved with what we have going on here. Is if you make these historic districts. So restrictive for what somebody needs to do to modify a building. It keeps people from buying the buildings because it costs too much to upgrade the buildings to. Whatever standards are being put forth. So I would be in favor to have it both ways where we look at what you can do with new building materials. In keeping with the historic flavor of something without making people have to match. Materials that might not even be available that was done over a hundred years ago. So there's that fine balance of. Getting what you want out of a design standard versus what reality is. Of what it takes to have somebody invest in a community to to buy a building and bring it back to a certain level. Because I do notice, I think there's. A couple of buildings that from what I understand is the same owner. That would prefer to keep the building and the office space vacant because it makes more sense for them. From an accounting standpoint or whatever, but I think the goal should also be to encourage. New investment. In the downtown area without being overly restricted. So those are just some thoughts.
I I'm sorry, I was just saying, I just like would have picked it back on Joe since he's. Since before he before it goes away. One. I I've actually worked under a historic in a historic district in Beverly, Massachusetts and. And we wanted to put skylights in the third floor of a house that you couldn't even from the sidewalk see the roof and we had to go. Before their their planning commission and their historic commission to get it done and we actually got it done finally, but it was not easy to do. For something that was as simple as something that doesn't really show. And the other thing was that. It came up twice in the when we were in two thousand, you know, sometime between two thousand one and two thousand four. That, you know, should we create a historic district and and I I don't care either way, you know, I can see how they're they're good and bad. But there was no interest in Cedar Willy at that time to be a historic district. People said exactly what Joe did that. They're trying to run businesses. They don't have time to be. Doing the historical stuff to they're not anthropologists or or archaeologists, they're. They're business owners. So anyway. Just a little perspective there. And like I said, that that's not my feelings on it. It's just what I what we. Found out from business owners at that time in two thousand one to two thousand four.
I would agree with what both of you, Joe and and Pat just said. I I don't think there's been any. Request to create a historic district, so. What we're trying to do is. Without going to those lengths where, you know, we're creating a historic preservation requirement. But we're trying to protect the historic buildings. To to. Prevent them from being modified past the point of being recognizable as historic buildings. That's something that the council was pretty clear about. I'm trying to speak for what the council said, so it's always a little difficult. I don't think that they're talking about creating historic district. And I do know that, you know, the city. Is very cognizant of how hard it is for business owners. In the downtown area already, and so we're not trying to create. Barriers or. Hurdles that are too hard for anybody to reasonably address. But it is clear that the council wants to protect the historic buildings. And create maintain the historic feel of the downtown area. So. Can we do that balance it like Joe Fatisi said? Allowing use of new materials and I I don't think we were. I I think that's what we're hoping to do. That's certainly the perspective that I've had on this. Wasn't thinking that we would require that. A business owner find a historic glass type to to go in, you know, you can use new materials. So that's where we we plan to go with this. I think is a great important topic of discussion. So I'd like to actually hear from the planning commission on. More on this, make sure we're going in the right direction.
Commissioner Maddox.
Well, I. I like that idea. I mean, I think that. I. I think that we need to find it strike a balance between implementing design standards that uphold sort of a universally. High quality look to the development and and, you know, his. Relevant to the architecture that's there, but. First of all, we don't want to, you know, make a process that's so onerous, but. Also, we want to allow for flexibility for business owners. I mean. Things like what happened at the bullpen, putting those garage doors in. Honestly, I think the garage door idea is awesome. Implementation wasn't great, but I wouldn't want a set of design standards that. Prevented a business from doing something like that because I think that's a really good thing to create a vibrant downtown, right, is to be able to have. Restaurants that are kind of spilling out onto the street that. You know, in my mind, that's a good thing, but we need to, you know, figure out a way that we can. Make it look good at the same time and. And and so if there's another historic building downtown where something like that was relevant. I think we'd want to encourage that and, you know, encourage people to. Make use of these buildings and in sort of a modern or a more modern fashion while. To me, I it's less about the historical relevance of the architecture as it is about maintaining like a high quality. Sort of commercial looking downtown and. You know, like. And it's easy to see, I guess it's hard to explain that sort of, but it's easy to tell when you see it. And so that's like. I think where these these sort of contrasting pictures are really helpful because. You know, it it's. Because the use of modern materials, say Hardy board siding or something like it's done in the right way, it can actually look quite attractive and good. But it can also look very cheap and like a a track home, you know, and so it. Anyway. I don't know exactly how you write those rules, but we're starting.
No, you're right, though, but we do have sections like on the doors and windows section on page twenty one. Of our design standards. These are just places we need to just update. Do things that we've seen. Change. As far as what what people and businesses want to do. So, yeah, we got a bunch of places we need to start. Really beef this up, too.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Joe.
We're Joe. Just for the record, I agree with Silas. I I like those roll up doors and I. As I was walking up and down the sidewalks today, the only place that was thriving was the bullpen and the roll up doors. Everything else was either boarded up or asleep. So I'm all for it. I think we all we almost need to come up with a hybrid system here where we maintain the. The historical look, but use modern. Day materials. Like the bullpen did because I I think it's cool looking. I just don't like the cookie cutter. Aluminum doors that everybody has downtown. I'd like to do something different there that. You know, gives it some flair, not just. Look like you picked it up at the used building supply store.
So does this sound accurate? We're good. We're shooting for a historical look with a modern flair.
Sounds good to me.
Commissioner Penno. Yes, no, even quiet.
Stacy, you're on mute.
Yeah, I know. No, I'm good with what most of what's been said so far. We'll just go with I'm a big history buff and I love our downtown because of its history. And I understand why the council's against those doors and I personally can't stand them. But I also know we have to do what's going to work to make our businesses thrive. I just don't think garage doors on a bar. Was the best idea. But we'll get there.
So I don't don't take this the wrong way because I also like history stuff. Two more things I thought of when, well, Matt, Mr. Maddox was speaking was that. Back when. When I started on the planning commission, I was also on a committee that was called. Downtown Revitalization Committee, and I don't know if they still exist or not, but we were looking for ways to to revitalize downtown Cedar Willy and. It was a kind of an adjunct between the planning commission and the. Oh, the Chamber of Commerce. So anyway, one of the things that they talked about there was and this was at the same time we were writing this was that they were thinking about doing. Actually doing a historic theme, you know, like Leavenworth had done and like Winthrop had done and being kind of the Art Nouveau nineteen twenties Cedar Wally. And we looked into that and. And we found out that it was the least favorite era in history to do as a as a theme, you know, for people to come and see. You know, people like Main Street U S A at Disney World, but but that's the only place that is able to pull it off. And. Then the other thing that I was gonna mention. So anyway, you know, we ditched that idea because we if it's not going to draw people in, what's the point? And the other thing that I was gonna mention was that. The Pearl District down in Portland is a amazing place in that all the buildings are historic. They're all warehousey buildings. I don't know how many of you have been down there. They've been fairly liberal about letting them do modern things to them. They all have roll up doors and sliding doors and. Folding doors and glass awnings and so it's very edgy. It has, you can tell immediately when you walk in it, this is, these are old working buildings. But but they have very, very modern touches and that place is just flooded with people when we're not in a pandemic and a and a riot, daily riot situation. So. That's that's someplace that we definitely would want to. Look if we're thinking about doing the historic with a with modern materials or historic with a modern edge. And again, I'm not pushing that idea, but that seems to be what young people. Want they want the roll up doors, they want the places to kind of spill out into the street and. Silas was saying so, and Joe was saying so. Anyway, just a couple more things that I thought of when we were doing that that are, give you a little more perspective, so.
No, they did something really similar in Vancouver and Yalstown. I watched it progress over the past twenty five years. And I gotta tell you, you want to talk about vibrancy, you can't even get into a place on a Friday or Saturday night. And it's a mix of everything from salons to restaurants, to coffee shops, to a whole mix of all kinds of things.
And interestingly enough, in Yalstown, still, still thriving businesses in there, there are print shops in there. My wife and I went down there to pick up photographic material, which can't, you know, it's hard to find sometimes and we had to pick some up for her father-in-law. And, and there were all kinds of active businesses going on in Yalstown, even though you've got all of the, the bars and, and all the other forms of entertainment and stuff going on there. It's really impressive.
Anytime we've talked about things, I've used Vancouver as an example, because there's sections of the city, like when we were doing UVMU and things like that. That you have examples of just even the building architecture and how that, that really works. So the Canadians have given it a bit of thought and I miss Canada. We're still shut. We might not be able to get there till twenty twenty two at the rate they're going. Anybody else? So John, what would you like to see from us going, going forward here? Having some of these other jurisdictions were, were definitely a good idea. I like what Snow Homish did, just simply for the fact that the pictures as well as explaining the different components of what we're even talking about. But we definitely need to update our doors and windows side for our own code, since we have so many options here.
But first, Andy, I could see that Commissioner Freiberger was trying to chime in there.
I'm looking at two screens. Go ahead, Danielle.
Well, working in a town that does have a historic district, I, I see the, the I think it's neat to preserve that, but I also agree that it can be very difficult for businesses to, you know, thrive and we already have difficulties with that. So I'm, I'm kind of repeating what's already been said, but just I think the idea to try to kind of have some guidelines, but not actually create an actual historic district. I've actually been looking at Google Street View here along Metcalf and kind of just going down, looking at all the wide variety of different styles, but all still very much older, you know, and, and kind of chiming into what was said about what is considered cool nowadays is the repurposing of the older buildings. And, and making it look nice, but still having that appeal is definitely something that I think, you know, people, businesses do see value in. And I also dislike those metal doors. The silver metal business doors that look so tacky, but yes, so just kind of a higher standard of quality of materials, I think is a, a good thing to, to look for, for when, you know, buildings are replaced. Actually, as I was going along the street view here, the photo popped up of the old video West building. So, you know, whatever group, you know, places, anything like that, anything that burns down. Or any, anything that winds up being remodeled, it'd be, it'd be great to have something more, I guess. A little bit easier for, as was mentioned, people who aren't architects to kind of know what are they talking about? What are they looking for? For a building. That's all I had.
Just a quick point, Commissioner Johnson is now in attendance. So we have a full house.
So Commissioner Johnson, do you want to give us your opinion? Maybe, should we, should we give a background of where we are?
A little, a little context. I could give you my opinion about anything. I mean, yeah, so what's, what's the context here? And, and I apologize, I, I, it's been a long workday, so.
So, the planning commission, do you want me to give a rap, Joe? The, the planning commission's been talking about kind of their, their vision for the downtown. We started with a discussion of, you know, how far do we want to go with requiring replacement of historical parts of buildings or are we treating, going as far as treating this as you know, creating a historic district or what, what are we trying to achieve with our design standards? We've heard that, you know, not really, not, it doesn't, the planning commission's opinion isn't very strong about creating a historic district as much as creating a high quality downtown. Maintaining the historic feel of the downtown and but allowing for modern uses to make the buildings more usable. And definitely not requiring using old materials to mimic the, the original. Because that can be expensive and not as, not as good as you know, modern materials that you can buy easily. So, do you have, are you, are you prepared to talk about what your vision for the CBD? We're kind of focusing on the downtown historic aspect of the central business district.
Sure, sure, yeah. So, you know, I, I agree with a lot of that. You know, I, I don't want to overly limit ourselves, but, you know, I definitely think that there needs to be like a, at least a historical feel. You know, my, my big thing is, you know, Cedar Willy is really proud of its heritage. And so we need to really preserve a bit of the heritage and and be able to tie the, the past with the present. You know, we've, we've always been able to look backwards and also forwards at the same time. We take pride in our past, but are willing to innovate and, and be a bit forward thinking as well. You know, I think two part of it is, you know, I don't want to promote something as themed as Leavenworth. But at the same time, I think that there needs to be something to woolly that really distinguishes us from, from other towns, other municipalities within Skagit County. You know, we're, we're so far off of I five that, you know, there, I think you know, having a draw, having some sort of aesthetic appeal would really help to pull in those other people, whether it be from Bellingham or from other parts of Skagit County. You know, and we are, not only are we fairly far off of I five, but we're to the east, which you know, there's, there's not a ton of draw to the east versus there's a bit more to the west of I five. So, you know, with that being the context and the framework, I think we definitely need to be able to help distinguish ourselves in a way. And, but at the same time, I think for citizens a big part of it is not losing our identity. You know, people have a very strong sense of the, the woolly history and that woolly identity. And I think that we really need to be sure to honor that. You know, as, as appointed officials, being able to speak on behalf of the city. I think that that, there's a very strong vein within the community for that. You know, I, I, I wouldn't want to over limit or overly burden businesses or building owners in downtown like you, like you're mentioning. You know, I, I, as much as it would be cool to have like every building on the historical registry. I realize that that comes with a lot of responsibility and a financial burden and very strict standards that we have to live towards. And I, I wouldn't want to, to require that of building owners downtown. But at the same time, you know, I would like to see them held to a certain aesthetic standard that at least pays tribute to Cedar Willy's heritage. And so that, I think that's kind of the big thing for me is paying tribute to our heritage. Cause I think it's very much part of our culture. And so as long as we're doing that and not necessarily demanding a ton from those who, you know, we would be entrusting with that responsibility. I think that that would be best. And, you know, it'd be, it'd be really cool to, to have opportunities to maybe repurpose buildings. Keep the, the historic aesthetic, but still allow them to think outside the box and provide you know, additional modes of entertainment or you know, be able to think creatively about their shops. I think that we definitely need to leave room for that and that will just continue to help provide that, that additional draw. So that in a nutshell, that's, that's kind of my thoughts on, on the downtown. So hopefully that helps.
What you just mentioned was part of the discussion, as well as they really like, people really like the styles that we are building. That between the windows and just everything that that they did there looks really nice. I mean, where the meeting room is, it's all glass, so it's that that's like the poster child right now, what we'd like to see.
No, that, that is definitely a really great example. I'd concur.
Anyone else?
I, I had a question for, for Catherine and John. In, in your, like I said, I haven't had time to read either the other cities' codes or, or our own guidelines in a long time, except just in spotty, spotty things, but as you guys have gone out and looked at other cities' codes, have you, how do other cities deal with the fact that like Cedar Willy, they may have a high percentage of absentee landlords or out of town landlords. And how do they get them to buy, both buy into the concepts and also get them to buy into upgrading and you know, and maintaining their, their buildings? Have you come across stuff like that? In the code?
I, I have not seen anybody address that issue. Catherine's looked at these a lot closer than I have, so maybe she has.
I, I also haven't really seen anything specific to that. There's just the requirements. A lot of these kind of focus on renovations or new development, you know, that don't really go into existing conditions as much. And that kind of would, I feel like, cover more of that with absentee landlords and things. But a, you know, a maintenance component could be an interesting idea. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of time, time right now, but I'm hoping that things will get better as summer approaches for me and, and and I'm more in a design state of mind in the summertime, I think, when I'm out seeing things and doing things. So I, I at least will try and keep my eye out for, for information on how cities are, are doing that. Because, you know, obviously some places get it and some places don't. And there must be a, there's something different about their, way their codes are written. Or, or how they, just how they approach land, landlords and business or building owners as a, you know, as a city.
John, have we conducted any enforcement actions for buildings that are in a state of some type of disrepair? They're right off the bat, it's a violation, it's something now, I think so. You're on mute.
Thank you, sorry. In order to be, there to be a violation, there needs to be a violation of some sort of code. So typically that's building code and in order to be in violation of the building code, it has to be basically unsafe. So we don't usually see buildings get that far. We don't, we, we definitely don't have any regulations to require you know, maintenance of certain elements such as, you know, shabby awnings or something like that. There was a period, I think, fifteen years ago or more where the, the possibly the Chamber of Commerce addressed a lot of that. You know, sending notes to their, to their members saying, hey, you gotta fix your awning, it looks bad. But we don't have any maintenance requirements like that.
Should we? Should we have some type of maintenance requirements for something like that?
Sounds like something the planning commission should address, yeah.
Anybody has an opinion on that?
That would necessarily require enforcement then.
Commissioner Maddox, go ahead.
Well, just to go with Commissioner Freiberger on that, I I think that puts the city in an awkward place as far as enforcement goes and especially when you're dealing with business owners who may be otherwise struggling and things like that. You know, that's a, that's a tough one. And I don't see a real, I mean, it'd be nice to say everybody had, you know, to make the whole city an HOA, but that's just, you know, that's not really the I don't know, I'm not sure I'm on board with the city being in that role.
It's more the egregious stuff, like let's say a window's out and all of a sudden somebody just throws plywood up and just hammers it up in place. I mean, you don't want to be looking at that either, right?
We did, we did have that situation exactly about a year or two ago and we do have requirements where you can't have boarded up windows. So we did make that property owner put windows back in and actually did a pretty nice job.
And, and also your, I think you guys did something with signs that, you know, if a business, a business has been out of business for a while, they have to take their sign down or at least blanket so that so that the sign isn't there for fifteen years, even though the business isn't. Yeah, and I, I agree with Silas and Danielle, we, I, I think that's more of a enforcement in that sense is more of a, a chamber job. But the city could look into, and with the chamber, into incentives for incentives for businesses to, to make upgrades and whatnot. And I don't know if we've tried that before and it's too cumbersome and we don't have time to write grants and that kind of stuff or not, but but that's the one place where the city could help is, is incentives to upgrade things. But I think the enforcement, the chamber knows its businesses, chamber knows which ones are struggling, which ones aren't, and they can twist arms much more gently and, and actually try to help each other and they can sell the community as a quote community and, and try and get everybody to be on board with it. I'm pretty sure that's how Leavenworth does it. I talked with one of their planning commissioners once about how they are able to pull their theme off and and they said that it was mostly the, their chamber that works with new people when they come in and buy a building or buy a business. So anyway, that, that's my opinion anyway.
Anyone else? So moving forward, what would you like to see for our next discussion and go around on, on this in particular? Do you want us to take it a piece at a time and look at the door aspect of it or On, on this in particular, do you want us to take it a piece at a time and look at the door aspect of it or? Or whatever, look at some of the other codes and then start giving, uh. Opinions as to what we think needs to be buttoned up, like the doors and windows definitely, and that's. Pretty much what precipitated this whole discussion and I could easily see how we can definitely upgrade a lot of this here.
So was there a? Um, was there one of the design manuals? From the other jurisdictions that anybody particularly liked? Uh, so I'm gonna do a little round robin and say, uh, who, like, if you had to choose a favorite one of them. Which one would it be? Uh, who says Arlington, raise your hand?
There's a part of it I like.
And what about Sumner?
I, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna raise my, I like Sumner in two thousand one to two thousand four when we were looking at it, uh, to work on ours. I don't know what they've changed since then, but, um, they were very forward thinking. Um, they, uh, they had a, um. God, I can't remember the name of the group, but it was a New Jersey, um, urban design group that, uh, did their whole manual for them. The illustrations were great on what they were looking for. Uh, it explained, uh, a lot of concepts. It's where we got the idea of, um. Limiting the size of apartment complexes and making them blend into the community more. It's where we got the idea for, um. Uh, low impact development, uh, things like where you have retention ponds and you want them to be. Uh, temporarily full of water, but two days later they're dried up and kids can play in them and. Um, just that, that kind of stuff, very forward thinking, um, stuff. That's where we got the idea for, uh, live works. At the time, because they weren't well known, even though they've been around for hundreds of years. Uh, but the modern concept wasn't around and we got it from them. So, uh, sorry, I liked Sumner's in the early two thousands. I don't know how much it's changed. And I'm like Silas, I, and, uh, everybody else probably, there's parts of everyone I like. Uh, Arlington's I haven't read. Snohomish, I think you said, um, showed what you should do and what you shouldn't do, or at least an idea of that. I like, I think that's great. And then, uh, Sumner, like I said, I liked before, sorry.
Go for it.
Oh, so it actually was Sumner that I was referencing earlier rather than Arlington for the picking some. Uh, different design things that seems like a kind of nice way to, um. You know, that a property owner can choose, you know, gives options. So I, I agree, I, I do like. Sumner really well, though definitely there were parts of all of them that were, um, useful. So they, Sumner had a lot of, uh, diagrams and, and, and things to, to, to show what they were aiming for.
Um, did anybody particularly like Snohomish?
I did.
More than the others.
I think it's just laid out and really easy to read format, and then you can apply it to the different, uh. Pictures of what, uh, they're trying to accomplish and what they don't encourage. So just made for an easier read for me. Now, like some of the structure that they have in here, specifically the, uh. Uh, excuse me. The, uh, what do you call, just the, uh. The different, uh, stages when they're looking for a design review, that I don't necessarily think we need that. But they also have it laid out in another way of the different aspects of what they're trying to, uh, manage. Particularly the outdoor seating rails and things like that.
Okay, so what I'm, I was taking that as just a, a guide to see if. We're to borrow more heavily from one or the other, which one might we lean towards more? Um, not sure I got concrete answer, but. It, it's just illustrative of, of where we are in this process. We're trying to determine. You know, how much to do. Um, I'm not getting a strong feeling that anybody's thinking we just should copy somebody else's whole hog. What I'm seeing is. Bits and pieces of various ones and, uh, we can try to sew that into our existing one or. Uh, rewrite our, our existing one and, and bring those elements in, so. If I can ask, and I know this is kind of a big ask. If the planning commission could send us some quick notes about what it is about each of. The, uh, the things that they saw in any of the, um, the examples that they really liked. So we can, so we can look at what you like and, and try to incorporate that into ours. I appreciate, you know, uh, um. The discussion here, Danielle was talking about the, the good diagrams. Um, in Arlington, uh, Joe is talking about the well laid out and, uh, structure of, of Snohomish's. Joe Fornetta said he liked part of the Arlington one, but, um. Didn't mention which part, um, so if there's things like that that you could send to us and we can. But that might be helpful for us to, to move forward. Little homework for you.
What do you want them by?
Does that sound reasonable? I don't want to, I don't want to. Ask you to do something that's unreasonable.
That's fair, I think.
That's, that's reasonable.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
So we didn't really get to talking about outdoor seating at all, I think. It was just way more general this time.
That's understandable. I mean, we're, we're, we're trying to gauge where we're going. We're not, we didn't expect you to. Give us all of the answers. We're, we're really just trying to get a gauge, um, for, for what the planning commission's interested in. Um, if you want to, if you, if you want to include. Particular things that you saw in various other jurisdictions. Uh, saying, you know, you like these elements of the, you know, the specifically out of Snohomish's. Um, outdoor seating area, that'd be great. And, you know, if I, if we see like an art, an overarching theme. We can run with that. If not, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll just. Try to do our best to synthesize what we've learned from the planning commission today.
So everybody has their.
I think that's probably where we can go next time is we can have some draft information, uh, some draft, um. Code changes to these three areas. See, see if we got close. So if you guys would be, uh, so kind as to send us your comments on this. By the end of this week, that would help us a lot to get, have time to, um. To, to do the work, because this is gonna be, this is gonna be, uh, a lot of changes for you to, uh, for us to, to put into it, so. Uh, we, we need it soon. And you're, it's fresh in your mind now too, so, uh. I encourage you to do it sooner than later, so while it's still fresh in your head. We always say that to ourselves too, and then we wait till the last minute. Make it much harder on ourselves. It's just human nature, we understand.
So everybody knows what we need to do. So before I move on, does anybody have any final comments on what we just discussed? No? Okay, uh, we don't have any new business and planning commission discussion and information items. There is one I would like to share. I spoke with, uh, Mayor Johnson yesterday and she wanted me to pass this on to everyone. Counsel and her appreciate all the hard work we did to get the, uh. Rita Board, uh, standards in place in a fairly short period of time. So it seems like that was a bit of a hot item for what they were looking at and, uh, she was very appreciative of. The work that we put in and the quick turnaround time. So yes, we are, we are, we are appreciated, which is nice. So at this particular point, does anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Can I, can I piggyback on what you just said?
Sure.
The council was, was very com- uh, complimentary to the planning commission for their work on the, on the digital signs. Um, they passed it in one read, which is not their normal form. They usually have two reads on all new. Ordinances that come to them and so. They passed that, uh, they're, they're happy with it and, and eager to get it put into place. So last Wednesday. It passed through, uh, and unanimously, unanimously and went into effect. Well, we'll go into the effect, uh, this weekend.
Right on. So good job, everybody.
So, uh, not, not to, not to pack on, but I'll just extend, uh, Councilwoman Kestie's, uh, thanks and praise also. She. Reached out to me personally and, and thanked me or thanked the commission via me, so I'm forwarding it on to everybody else. Uh, she was very appreciative and, um, as you all are, are well aware now, that was kind of a. An important subject for her and so she was grateful.
Anything else? So, a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Johnson. Do I have a second?
One second.
I have a second by Commissioner Freiberger. The move, the, the meeting is adjourned at. Seven fifty-three PM. And, and John, we know what we need to do, be between now and the end of the week.
Yeah, I, I appreciate, I really appreciate you being willing to do that by the end of the week.
All right. Bye, everybody.
Thanks.